I'll call this meeting with Christiansburg Town Council to order. I'm going to ask Councilman Harry Collins if he would look us in the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? I would like to make two suggestions. One, I'll put it, since you can't do it, I'll ask one of you to put it in form of motion. Under E, the scheduled public hearing, the scheduled public hearing through January the eighth, for a flagpole that has been withdrawn by school board. And I would like to add passage of three resolutions, one for the museum and two for the art projects on Main Street. To move.
Second.
Motion is second.
I have, or is this adjustment to the agenda then?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to propose another one.
Sure.
And it's really an addition to one of our closed meetings as a result of our meeting this evening. Under closed meeting, item number A, or excuse me, A is closed meeting, under request number one, about the potential per acquisition of real property, I would like to add, or I'd make a motion that we add a discussion of a potential acquisition of a historic property in the Cambria District.
A second. All right, so, got most, got second, got all kinds?
I'm gonna piggyback on yours, Mayor, if that's okay, add that to the other adjustment.
That's fine, I'll follow in like my request. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Hi.
Councilman Collins?
Hi.
Councilman Hopper?
Hi.
Councilman Sikes?
Hi.
Councilman Shawalter?
Hi.
Hi.
This is six oh, thank you very much. Under public hearings, we have two tonight. We have conditional use permit request, Christiansburg Presbyterian Church, for electronic messaging sign located at 107 West Main Street, tax map numbers five two six A, two oh three, and two oh six, in the B two Central Business District. Is there anyone here to address this, this hearing? If you would name an address?
My name is Don Makin, I live at nine forty Hummingbird Drive in Christiansburg. I'm the pastor at Christiansburg Presbyterian Church. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak at this meeting of the town council regarding the church's conditional use permit request for an electronic messaging sign on the church property. Our church has much to offer Christiansburg, and we are eager to share our church's announcements and activities for the community in its new, more effective way. In replacing our current sign with updated technology, we want to assure you that it is our intention that the replacement sign will be attractive and a suitable fit for the downtown historical district. The sign will adhere to town regulations with regard to height, dimensions, design, and so forth. We do not intend to use scrolling messages, pulsing or flashing graphics, animated images, or other display techniques that can be visually unpleasant or distraction passing traffic. So that the sign will not create offensive glare or other traffic hazards, the brightness of the message board will be set to automatically dim in response to low ambient lighting conditions. We're grateful to the planning commission for recommending approval of the conditional use permit. One condition on which we ask reconsideration, however, is the six-second minimal interval of message change. We request approval of a four-second minimal interval, as permitted in other locations in Christiansburg. We believe the longer six-second minimal interval is better suited in locations where traffic comes to a halt, such as an intersection with a stoplight, since that gives more time for multiple messages to be viewed. At our location, however, traffic moves past the church without stopping. A four-second minimal interval would enable our sign to make better use of the limited overall viewing time for passing vehicles. We respectfully ask that the four-second minimal interval be allowed for our sign as it is for others around town. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak. If there are questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them and I have topics of this state to give you to flesh out.
Was this four-second covered in the public hearings when you went before the planning commission?
Yep. They discussed it, I believe.
Okay.
Thirty minutes.
Okay.
It was one of the recommended conditions, right? That came with the recommendation that they're different.
Before?
For six seconds, which is two seconds more than what the standard applies in the hearings. The ordinance states that a message must stay for four seconds if there is a switch. So it was, so the recommendation was for the six seconds.
And what's the state code on that say?
It was the four seconds, it's parallel with our codes.
Okay. Anyone else here to address this subject? Hearing nine, I will close this section of the public hearing. The next is conditional use permit request by David P. Hill, agent for Junkin Street Partners LLC, for a planned housing development to consist of multiple family dwelling, up to twenty dwelling units and approximately 1.031 acre parcel tract, tax map number five two seven dash one two dash seven, located at 200 Junkin Street Northeast in the Marquee Martha Family Residential District. This property is designated as residential in future land map, land use map of 2013 comprehensive plan. Anyone to address this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, it's Town Council, my name is David Hill. And I have been working with the campaign of those rights and assistant manager Andrew Warner who has helped over the last couple of months on the proposal. And tonight I'll just give you a quick overview of the proposal. My company, Old School Partners, currently has this building under option, and this is the proposal that Old School Partners has proposed. And currently by right on this property, one could ask, one could just go in and build a tenement apartment building that has a number of bedrooms, no neighborhood vibes, no historic controls, no consideration about the tenant or rent. In contrast, the proposed action, what we've, we've advised to do is to have a conditional use permit for seventeen units. We've been to a neighborhood collaboration that has invited neighbors to come to tour the building and also speak through the plan within against night. We would provide a natural weather, a client-designed construction, that is a truly historic building, and it's, we don't want the neighbors to take it to the process. And these will be market rate apartments in the building. I'm sure you're familiar with the building, it was recently with the school board, before that it was the Christiansburg High School up till about nineteen seventy. And many of the historic features of the building were already there, and it's generally patchy, especially on the outside, outer shell of the building. The maps show us, the San Warren map shows built in nineteen twenty-one, so we're almost a hundred years old, it's a kind of nice, that was finished on its own, and it's very true. And there are certain things around the site and around the building that people of close neighborhoods like. For example, people really like the old brick sidewalk that goes in front of the school. And there's a very nice neighborhood feel all around the building. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and we want to take this building and bring it back to like be a part of it. We were able to find the old plans of the school, and so we would be using these to help us restore some of the spaces and some of the details of the original building. And just as curiosity, the old trusses are in the middle of the old gym space, great big trusses, and these are currently hidden, but are in the top ceiling down below. And if you notice, it was most recent offices, so it's kind of all chopped up in this smaller cubicle, all throughout the building currently. So, on October twenty-ninth, the planning commission passed this proposal, I believe it was, four to two, with these conditions. In general, the project will be built in general performance with the exceptional site player presented, with exception number seven, I'll get that just in a minute. The existing structure will be preserved and restored, as any preservation restoration should be implied with Virginia Park historic register criteria. No more than seventeen dwelling units, replace the fence residential character along the western property line. Parking will be confined to all street parking provided by the development. And any tree removed will be replaced with a tree of similar species. The brick sidewalk, or similar, similar, similar brick, will be extended to run along the full frontage of the property, except for, of course, the parking lot entrance, and that's what number seven is, that we extend that sidewalk. Parking, parking lot structures, the external building might be fully shielded and direct away from the base of the property. And we aren't allowed to have home steg, or you know, BRBOs, or permanent, or things like that. And those are all fine, and that came through a negotiation with neighbors, asked what they wanted in this, in the sheet. In addition, we suggested that currently there are about fifty-six parking spaces on the property, we don't need nearly that many, we reduced parking spaces to forty. And we moved the fire pit and cornhole game away from residences and toward the parking lot, that was another thing that we promised to do. So, just quickly, the floor plans you see here are provided. On the, on the main floor, there would be apartments around the edge, it's generally the location of the old classroom, that's how you do, you would be able to store preservation. And we would clear out a number of the old offices that are in the middle, so that you get that large gym floor kind of space back into the building. This is just a little section showing one of the apartments in the back, some of them are such that you can get a little loft above the kitchens, so that you can kind of be starting with spaces. And then that large open space, where we take out the cubicles, you can see the old trusses and the old skylights, that'd be pretty exciting, common space. Down the basement, the basement, we would develop also one bedroom apartments, and generally that would be, we'd be able to manipulate the halls a little bit down there, so there would be a number of apartments down the basement with either windows or door on the outside. And we studied a little bit some of, some of the usual apartments, this one is one up in the front, on this main floor with a kind of a open to, so that you can see the skyline above. So eventually we make some pretty dramatic spaces to use for parking. And the site plan, there's, there's one of them against the door, if you want, maybe getting to the end or deep open. But you can see that the parking lot is currently fifty-six spaces, and it's reduced in size to forty. And on this drawing, you see just the label, we had the cornhole in the fire pit on the back side of the building, but decided that we were smarter in that we are parking on away from the residences. And finally, on the bottom that corner, you can see where we would extend and store a sidewalk, that kind of room, probably you can see at the bottom of the site, we extended on to the right here. It is just an exterior view, showing how, you know, the storage preservation treatments would be taught at the beginning. And then finally, just a simulation board of interior finishes. This is a project that Old School Partners just finished in Benton, it was for similar schools. This is the Willamy Cook loss, and it, just showing that to show you how, when you, when you take out those drop ceilings, you get those full windows, you see in the upper left picture, and the kind of finishes that we propose for the kitchens, with higher end finishes for small, higher end apartments. So that really finishes my presentation on the project. Tonight, David Spiegel was listening, he's one of our Old School Partners, you see him in the picture here down below, so you have two out of four up here tonight, and we'd like to communicate any questions that you might have, or any, yes, sir?
I had a person who lives in the neighborhood, and he has come to me a couple of times, and he is quite concerned about the increase in traffic that that will do, because the road there, well, the Junkin Street is, is not that big of a road, and he thinks that could become quite a hazard.
Well, the, remember that, I guess the only thing that, only way to respond is that there'd be more, there would be more, perhaps more traffic than there is today with the empty building. The board, the building had been used as a school board office in the, you know, upper fifties and parking space, I'm not sure how many people worked there at the time. So, it had been, it had been used heavier than it is today. And I believe people have mentioned to me also that, you know, the office use, maybe like that kind of eight AM to five PM surge, you know, a couple of surges in traffic, more residential, I don't know, you can kind of see it happen, so that would be the difference too, but the road has handled more than it has handled, I guess.
Is there any particular clients now that you're looking forward to, I take you to reflect these?
Yes, sir. And yes, they are market rate, these are not in any ways subsidized, or, you know, they aren't getting well income tax, that's why they're not, they're market rate. And so, the market that we expect is, and I'll just say my experience with the Willamy Cook, I think it's similar kind of to me, I think, is that it tends to be more for people who want a smaller, higher amenity apartment, and enjoy that kind of historic preservation angle. And so, we were quite pleasantly surprised in Christiansburg that a number of the people that wanted to rent those units actually have been students at the school, about a third of those units, and seven out of twenty-one are rented by former students. And so that's what becomes of, actually, market, and then it remains, it tends to be single people and couples, and it tends to be professionals that are working with the community.
And you said there was an open area in here too, right?
Yes, sir. Generally, the area, the old maze, was opened back up, so that it's an open space.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm not sure the format, Mr. Mayor, I think.
Yes, sir, you can come.
I was wondering about the fence you say you're gonna put up?
Yes, sir.
My property borders the parking area, and I think we need a privacy fence all the way along to there, ten foot high, so I don't get the noise from all the cars, the headlights, the alarms, that sort of thing, is that possible?
Sure, I think, yeah, we can, we can visit that, are you on the?
I have five heart street, we own from Junkin Street down to Main Street.
We had done, there was a neighbor who had asked us to put a residential, we haven't talked about it in very detail yet, a residential field fence along the back property line, that seems reasonable, so we.
You're pretty much invading my backyard through forty cars and forty additional people.
Well.
I'd like to see a higher type.
Just, just for the record, your name, please?
Paul Trout.
Thanks, Paul.
Well, sure, we'll entertain that, and I'm not, Mr. Mayor, is it format, should we just talk back to?
No, that's not the format.
No, it comes to us.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Trout can listen.
He can.
Oh, sure.
He directs everything to us.
Okay, so, yes, we can sort of consider that, that's kind of the effect, we're interested in hearing what others need to make this a more comfortable deal, so. I believe we'll go to whatever format we need to, to.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counsel?
I'll make one comment. I'm actually familiar with Mr. Hill and his track record in Roanoke, there's quite a bit of this type of redevelopment, lost style, I don't know all the planners speak for it, but this is a big deal right now, and I'd be willing if counsel is open, I'd be open to considering this for action tonight, if he, if the, if applicant is willing to address Mr. Trout's concern about a privacy fence. If counsel's open, I'd actually like to, or I'd recommend that we, or that we take action on this this evening.
I think this is, I've been, with sort of my comments were a little negative, but I, I think this is something that Christiansburg needs, and I would support something like this.
I'm all, I'm all for, but I'd like to put it on the, or I like counsel's thoughts, I'll make a motion that we add this to counsel's discussion and action this evening.
I would recommend the church, yeah.
Well, and the church as well, yeah, I amend my motion, absolutely, I'm comfortable with churches request as well. So, I'll just make a motion for both, that we add both of them for action this evening.
I'll try to. Got a motion, second? Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk, we will add those under sections, I guess it's gonna be E and F, under discussion by mayor and council.
Councilman Bishop?
Uh.
Councilman Collins?
No, no.
Councilman Hopper?
Hi.
Councilman Sikes?
Hi.
Councilman Shawalter?
Uh, no.
Councilman Sikes?
I'd almost like this to be unanimous, actually, if, I would like to, I'll go ahead and vote yes, and that's forty-two, but I don't wanna, I just would feel more comfortable it was unanimous vote to take action tonight. I mean, it's sort of awkward, but if there's two council members, don't feel appropriate to take action tonight.
What?
I withdraw my motion. I want, I want all kinds, I'm sorry, I want all council members, I want to respect the feelings of other council members to take act, action later, Dave. So, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Mr. Trout, do you withdraw a second?
Yes, I will.
Okay. That's a no vote, we'll, we'll take it up to the next council.
We're, we're, it's all official speakers today.
Your what? Okay, well, let's go. Anyone else here that would like to address, yes, sir?
My name is Henry Behan, my wife Tracy and I live here on two oh three East Main Street. I put some notes in because I'm usually have disappeared, so I'll try to just summarize them. I'm an architect, so fortunately my arms are painted, but as a European, I think issues of preservation are absolutely important. Today, we cannot live in a society without preserving our own heritage, and I think the gesture, the project has the value of bringing this old building into new reality. There are renovations, restorations, we have the patients adapted to the uses, and there are different ways of approach here. But I do believe that sometimes some gestures, some opportunities, or maybe in this fit, and I'd like to just talk about them. I think that this is a neighborhood, we came here because I think my neighbors, they invested for centuries in a certain way for buildings, we lived in the junking house. And I think there is the acknowledgement that this is socialite hill. My wife was exactly the director of the Bluegrass Trust, and unfortunately she cannot be here, but she wanted to convey that while we are mindful to preserve, we need to be mindful of how we preserve also. And I'd like you to also discuss, whenever it's appropriate, what are really the issues? It's not just simply a privacy fence, it's not just simply traffic, it's the acknowledgement that everyone has invested in homes, not houses, not housing. And like everybody here and you, we have traveled all over the world, and we have the privilege to bring our experiences to here. This is a unique neighborhood. I could have lived closer in Blacksburg where my job is, but socialite hill is simply extraordinary, and I'm not wanting to measure by terms, it is unique. Grand houses on Main Street than the other, not secondary houses but smaller in dimension, it is a neighborhood. And I think the discussion has to not be on the minor things which are important for each of us individually, but the question of if we invest in a new way of thinking that a school becomes now a place where it is, a place for a unit, a habitation, where people can socialize, procreate, different things that we all have done in our neighborhood. I think you have to ask the question, what is right in terms of size? And it was disappointing in the other meeting a month ago, that, that it wasn't addressed, it was, let's try to just wrap it up and say, let's have a privacy fence, so we marked it here, let's just do this, let's do the sidewalk, these are all important things. But I think you owe to the community and to every single person who has invested there, because if we want to talk investment, we, me, my wife, and all my neighbors, we have invested, and there's a legacy, there's a tradition. If the investors today think, oh, we can make our money, pardon me, then maybe it's a wrong investment. But the actual to preserve something, I am fully hundred percent on it, by inviting one more time to discuss the nature of how many dwellings should be there, how is that going to impact the fragility of this neighborhood? Fragility in terms of, it could probably go one way or another. Another day I heard that, well, if you don't accept our proposal, it will be slash, I interpret a crime house. One doesn't talk like that in a certain way. There are ways of saying, we will work with you, but also discuss the nature, the profound nature of what this is. And I think it came from me as a citizen of Christiansburg, and someone who cares about the neighborhood, I really think there is a difference between homes, houses, and housing. I just thought.
Thank you. Anyone else to address, tell us one issue, yes, sir?
Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Wyatt, and me and my family have lived at 102 Huckin Street for sixteen years now. I would like to speak briefly, just briefly, in support of the conditional use permit requested for Junkin Street. With all due respect to my neighbors, I believe they're being a little short-sighted in this matter. And I believe the proposed project has the best chance of preserving a historic structure and maintaining our property value in the neighborhood. The total square footage is not changing, so irrespective of the occupancy rate, I don't foresee any real impact on traffic patterns. I trust our future neighbors will use their judgment and obey traffic laws, I mean, it will be their neighborhood too, and you don't go driving real fast through your neighborhood. I have found several studies which show that historic development of this nature has been shown to improve, improve property values, while alternatives such as demolition and infill with newer buildings not in keeping with the character of a community, decrease property values or suppress them. So, I believe that the developers have acted in good faith and that they have been responsive to our concerns. Further, investments in historical rehabilitation are inherently costly, and I commend the developers for what seems to me to be a fairly reasonable plan. Ultimately, it's, it's their money that they're putting on the line, and I'm sure that they have done due diligence. I have just briefly looked at their properties and, for their projects in Benton and Roanoke, and it seems like they do a good job to me. And so, I'll just close by saying, when we first moved to this neighborhood, the school board was still there, at least some years ago. And it was a bustling place, there were cars in there all the time, they'd have public meetings, the street would be lined with cars, and there were never any problems that I ever can recall. So, I personally and my family hope and look forward to this property being to, put to a good and proper use while maintaining its historic character. And thus, I would encourage you to support the conditional use permit, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address, counsel?
Thank you, Mayor. Daniel was there, five line, bio, Harold A.
Daniel Behan, BioMarilife, Christiansburg. I didn't hear anything proposal about pedestrians or cyclists, or younger generation are going in that direction, and I think that needs to be looked at in our community, big time. Thank you.
Anyone else? If none, I will close with public carries. These will both be acted on at the next meeting, twenty-seven? Seven, somewhere close to that. All right. Introductions and presentations. We have introduction of new employees, I'm going to start with Crystal James, is the operations supervisor at the Aquatic Center.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and town council. I am thrilled to introduce to you our new aquatic tennis coordinator, Nate Destry. Nate is a familiar face to the Aquatic Center, and we are excited to have him back. His extensive competitive swimming and coaching experience has proved to be a great asset to the town of Christiansburg and our aquatic center. Nate comes to us from Michigan State University, where he was an assistant coach for his swimming diving program for just over two years. Prior to MSU, Nate had a successful collegiate swimming career at Saint Bonaventure, where he earned his bachelor's of science in sports studies and the concentration in movement science. From there, Nate moved on to West Virginia University, where he held a graduate assistant coach position while earning his master's of science in athletic coaching and educational. From two thousand six, two thousand fifteen to sixteen academic year, Nate was a part of Virginia Tech swimming diving coaching staff as an assistant coach, and it was during this time that Nate was also a life builder and a swim coach for us here at the CA St. Nate grew up in Virginia Beach swimming competitively throughout his school years, and is still actively training and competing with U.S. masters swimming. Nate and his fiancee, who is from Roanoke, are happy to be back in Virginia and closer to both families.
Thank you. I'm going to back up one moment. We have consent agenda that we have amended a couple times, and I'll let you very approve it, so, your motion, consent agenda?
Seven.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to just make one comment. I noticed that our portable, Sage, sorry, the word failed me, is being procured from Canada, and I had a little bit of trepidation about that, but I have spoken and had some discussion with Parks and Rec, Mr. Everly, and I understand that that's the leading type of company for this type of service. It wouldn't be my ideal to not order out of the U.S., but I understand that this is the best for Christiansburg, so I just wanted to state that, that that was a concern, but I'll move forward with the vote tonight.
We've got a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? If none, ma'am clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Uh-huh.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Sines?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stites?
Aye.
That is six, eight, thank you. Shows me I don't need to take any more vacations, I kind of lose my concentration after listening to one of these. I'm off my game tonight, bro.
Well, Mr. Behan, if it could, I'd like to just, I'd like to welcome Nate to, to here and to the Aquatic Center, and with your background and your resume, you know, I wish I had one that looked as good as yours, you know? Welcome, just welcome you here, and you did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, buddy.
Next is Parks and Recreation Director Brad Everly to introduce Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission member candidate, Mr. Art Cord Hall.
I've heard Cord's not going to speak tonight.
They just extended us up to about eleven-thirty.
Mr. Behan, I'm the council, I, I want to take the time to introduce Cord Hall, which most of you do know, but I want to talk a little bit about Cord. We had a vacancy within our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, and we placed that out, and Cord fortunately showed his support and his interest in serving, once again, for the town through the Parks and Recreation Commission, and basically was voted upon and recommended unanimously from our Parks and Recreation Commission. Cord Hall was very instrumental in a lot of things while he was here through town council, and he served as a liaison to the Parks and Recreation Department, a variety of different things such as the LED lighting system at the recreation center, the flooring, expansion of a lot of the pocket parks, and basically just being involved and being instrumental and trying to grow programs and events within the Parks and Recreation. So, we feel that Cord will be a huge, huge instrument for us, and, and we just appreciate Cord being, having interest in serving with us.
Are you going to say anything, Mr. Hall? You've got, you've got a session.
If you talk, you have to stay through the whole meeting.
I'm blessed to even be considered a candidate for Recreation Commission. Recreation, I think, is a, as a former coach, is very important for our youth, it's a great avenue for their time and attention, it's a positive avenue in the right regards, so I'd be great, I'd be very honored if I would be considered to be a part of Recreation Commission.
And we're very honored to have you with us.
Welcome back.
Mr. Hall, before the meeting, I told Henry, Councilman Sherwalter, this is like Mickey Mantle coming back to Yankee Stadium. It feels like you walk in a room and know that you can have any seat you want. I get up for you.
We'll, we'll let you know after we vote.
Yes, sir.
Building official Jerry Henley to introduce Board of Building and Code Appeals members, Richard Caldwell, Chris Foal, is that right? Jerry, where are you, buddy? Oh, there you go.
Mayor, council, thank you. Not all the members are going to be here tonight. Bob Hall is on his second appointment. He does quite a bit of volunteer work, as much as you probably know. We would ask that if you would, if you could take action on Bob tonight, we're not sure how long his appointment will be, or when he'll be able to get back for appointment. Chris Foal had a personal issue and was unable to attend tonight, but we should get him back at one of the next couple meetings. But we do have here tonight, one of our alternates to the board is Earl Schrader. Earl's back in the corner. Earl's on his second term on the Board of Code Appeals. He comes to us through the concrete industry. Earl's been employed at Chandler Concrete for a number of years. Larry Martin is also an alternate to the board. He's an architect and has been an architect in Radford for many, many years, and he is a really good person, and he, this is his third term on our board. And Richard Caldwell, and Richard's in the front there, Richard's a general contractor here in Christiansburg. This is also his third term to the board, and Richard was actually a building inspector here in Christiansburg in the late days, when we went back into private industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, I have Terry Caldwell, who is our aquatics director, and she has a very, very special recognition tonight.
Mayor and council, there's nowhere else I'd rather be this evening than to be able to come before you to introduce the Virginia Parks and Recreation Society's State Volunteer of the Year, Mrs. Shirley Hal. Shirley is absolutely amazing. I have to just give you a few stories about Shirley. So, I have been in the Parks and Recreation field for over thirty-five years, different agencies throughout the United States, and overseeing volunteers at one point, and I can honestly tell you, you have a volunteer right here in the town of Christiansburg that I've never seen anywhere else. She is an advocate for our center when I was first hired ten years ago. I will never forget, Shirley came to the corner office up there seeing me, I was barely, only a couple days in at work, and here came Shirley, and she wanted to know what I was going to do with that aquatic center. She wanted to know what the finances were going to be, expenditures, revenue, how I planned to manage it. So, we talked, and she'd come back and see me, and we talked some more. Before you know it, she was down by bow, getting bow's opinion on different numbers, and she pieced it all together, is what she did. She pieced it together so awesome that she was able, she was able to go into the community and talk to our citizens about how the aquatic center, what that was going to mean to them, health and wellness, what that was going to bring, how it was going to be another just niche of recreation in our, in our town. So, you know, when I talk to Shirley on a daily basis, and she says to me, I, I can present something to her, a challenge, and she goes, I got this, I can do this, I'll take care of it. And it's amazing, and before I know it, she's talking to each one of you, and she's talking to the mayor, and she just brings our community together, exactly what a volunteer is meant to do. We can have volunteers that say, I'll be there Tuesday, or I'll be there Wednesday, and they don't take it to heart. Shirley has a passion for what she does, and there's no doubt in my mind that when the state picked her to be the distinguished volunteer of the year, they picked the right person. Congratulations, Mayor. Thank you. [applause] Mayor and council, that Shirley goes down the water slide. She needed a little help from Crystal's team, by three, she went down, and I can remember her saying, I don't know if I'm ever going to do that again. So, it's just wonderful. Mayor, would you like to come up and present what you have for Shirley?
I have what you have.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I, I would say that it's, you know, I've known Shirley for many years, and, and at first, I wasn't sure she supported that whatsoever, and we all know that, but, I mean, she is the epitome of someone who's willing to pay time and learn. But, you know, in her spare time, she also volunteers with the Crystal Police Support Group, she's very active in there. Are you with Kelly also? Kelly's support group?
That's RSTP, all rest.
RSTP, that's correct. So, Shirley doesn't have a lot of extra time, and what she, what she has, it's well-earned time off, but I don't think it's more than a couple hours of that. Shirley, thank you, darling.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been an honor to work with you, and we'll keep it on for another few years. Thank you.
We were honored that evening. I, I was informed in advance that Shirley was going to receive her award several months ago, and we went to Richmond this past week for Shirley, and we started to see her award. But at the same time, I was honored when they announced that the Christiansburg Aquatic Center received the Best New Special Event Award for a population of twenty-five thousand for our First Responders Battleship Program. And, you know, I, that program is amazing. I have to, to the Aquatic Center staff to thank, and the previous staff, and our current staff, we came together and we wanted to come up with something that was going to bring, draw the community together at the Aquatic Center, so I was really pleased when we received that award. Our internal thanks obviously go to our first responders here in the town, that would be our Chief Hank, Chief Sisson, you know, they, they come together and they, they help out with everything to make that program work. And Chief Doyle's team, with those folks becoming involved, we now have Virginia Tech, we have all of Montgomery County jurisdictions out in Ryana, competing in the pool, sinking the battleship, so I would like to thank them publicly and, and just let you know how honored we are to receive that award. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Terry.
I keep asking Terry, when is she going to let the town council get in there and show her?
So good for them, buddy. Our next presentation.
Can I say something real quick, Mike? I'm sorry. When I ran for office the first time, apparently I wasn't very smart because I, I was not supporting the Aquatic Center. And I was downtown one day, and Miss Alec, she pulled me aside, and after we got finished talking, I was supporting the Aquatic Center. And that's the kind of person she is, she's a wonderful ambassador for Christiansburg, and I appreciate you. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks.
Our next presentation tonight is from Virginia Tech Foundation Incorporated Chief Executive Officer, Dr. John Dooley, to present on Go Virginia, Go Virginia is a statewide program that was launched two years ago to incentivize new economic growth across the Commonwealth. It's funded through funds of the General Assembly, there's distributed out to, there's a pot that stays with them, the state pool, and then there is, our regions have been defined, and there are resources that are, have been distributed out to the regions. A quick statement here as to what we're all about, that is to create higher paying jobs. And the standard by which we define higher paying, okay, is what is higher than the median of the region in which we, we serve, okay? And so, median salary of our region, I'll show you the region in a second, it actually extends all the way from West Virginia line to Appomattox County, the median salary for our region's about thirty-seven thousand. So, our task is to try to incentivize the creation of new jobs that pay greater than thirty-seven thousand dollars. Why is this our purpose, okay? Because it's proven, to provide a sustainable strategy for economic growth, and what we want to do is, it is not, we don't want to just transfer jobs from one region of the Commonwealth to another, but to attract new jobs, okay, that raises the entire, raises the entire base of jobs. The role of regional councils, okay, as I said, there are nine regions, I'll show you that map in a second, and they are led by business and business leadership and other individuals who have a strong vested interest in that region. And our job, our task is to try to find opportunities that will create this level of higher paying job for the region. This is the map of the state regions, and we are Region Two, as I shared, we extend from West Virginia line all the way to Appomattox County. As you can see here, again, there are nine regions, they are disproportionate as it relates to population, and part of the program is a distribution of resources based upon population, okay? And so, our regional distribution that we receive for Region Two on an annual basis from the state budget is about one point three, one point four million dollars, okay? That is to be leveraged. The Region Two council membership, okay, as you can see here, it's a twenty-four person council currently, the council meets on a bimonthly basis to, to review applications and to make strategic resource investment. I'm sure you know many of the people that are on this list, okay? And Dr. Ray Smoot, most of you know, okay, is the chair of the regional council. Also, one of, our first task, okay, as a regional council, was to create an economic growth and diversification plan, and we engaged a lot, many people across our region to, to look at what are the distinct, the distinctive advantages that we might have in our region to, to attract new jobs. And so, we did a comprehensive assessment, we engaged the Office of Economic Development at Virginia Tech as our agent in working on this, and certainly you can go on our website, the Region Two website, and you can see our diversification plan. These are the metrics by which we will measure the success of Go Virginia. As I said, net increase in high paying jobs, ROI, the return on investment, change of business sector or cluster mix, and the percentage of job increases attributed to out-of-state revenues. Again, we don't want to be stealing jobs from other parts of Virginia, we want to bring in new jobs from out of the state. These are the ways in which money can be invested. As you can see here, okay, the, on the left side, okay, are the primary areas, okay, that are allowable. We do not want to mix our resources with the resources of other state agencies and initiatives that would be funding many of the priorities that are identified there on the right side. As we went through our diversification plan, we identified these four major sectors to be priorities for investment in Region Two. New investment in life sciences and healthcare, leveraging upon the left side, okay, are the primary areas, okay, that are allowable. We do not want to mix our resources with the resources of other state agencies and initiatives that would be funding many of the priorities that are identified there on the right side. As we went through our diversification plan, we identified these four major sectors to be priorities for investment in Region Two. New investment in life sciences and healthcare, leveraging upon the presence of Corollian Health System, Lewis Gale, and others, okay, within the region. Advanced manufacturing, we still believe that there is a role, important role, of advanced manufacturing in our region. Of course, we have, with Volvo White, okay, a perfect example of what that could be, and we want to leverage those types of opportunities. IT and emerging technologies, including autonomous vehicles, and much of the research and resources that are taking place at Virginia Tech as it relates to IT and emerging technologies. And then the food and beverage process. And we truly believe that Region Two has some very unique assets that can be utilized to attract new jobs in food and beverage. I wanted to share with you, in our first year of doing Brand Awards, these are the awards that we have provided, the applications. We've received many applications, and these are those that we have done the due diligence on and supported, okay? They are in three different categories. The first category is in talent, focusing on talent recruitment and talent retention. And so, you can see here, we invested in three different initiatives. And what I want to bring particularly to your attention is the other support line, okay, is that part of the integrity of the Go Virginia program is requiring match, okay? It's just, we're just not taking resources out and distributing without some type of sustainability strategy by the various entities. And part of that is identified through match that will come to support the initiatives. Under entrepreneurship, okay, we have invested in two different initiatives, okay? Both are critical as it relates to developing an entrepreneurial ecosystem for our region. And you can get a good example here of the various level of partnership that these initiatives have enabled to garner. And then, thirdly, okay, is site development, okay? One is in the Region 2000 outside of Lynchburg. That is the Center for Energy Research and Education to support that economic cluster in the Lynchburg area. And then, I think many of you are probably aware of what a infrastructure project in Roanoke that will serve the broader region. Our plan for 2019, we are currently accepting applications for funding for this current year. The regional council met last Thursday. We looked at two different proposals at that point, and we are wanting to encourage other ideas, okay, for future meetings. What we need from you, you are an important stakeholder, a very important stakeholder. And we want, one of the reasons that I'm here for you is to make sure that you are aware of the characteristics of Go Virginia. If you know of opportunities, okay, in Christiansburg or for our region, okay, let us know, the council members know, so we can help and help those interests to develop an attractive proposal for consideration and funding. You know, one of the disappointments that I have had at this point is it relates to, we've seen many good ideas, but we have not seen those types of transformative ideas that I had anticipated or hoped that we would realize through this program. So, we're wanting to encourage the private sector and the public sector to identify ways in which we can make strategic investments that truly will be transformative and bring an added value to our communities. As you can see here, we also want your engagement and for your consideration. One of the nuances that we discovered this first year of our funding cycle is that many of the ideas found had challenges as it relates to securing government match, okay, to support that idea. And so, what we are doing, council members, the regional council members, are coming out to the bracket, to the stakeholders that we have across the region, and at least encouraging you to consider anticipation of future projects that might be added enhancements to the town of Christiansburg or the region, for you to consider putting a set aside in your budget, okay, that where if indeed the idea came forward and Christiansburg wanted to be invested in that particular idea, is that you would have that resource available to invest and to support that match. That is a quick overview of Go Virginia and the activity that is taking place in this region. I'd be glad to hear if any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
I have one question for Dr. Dooley.
Yes, sir.
I heard the presentation from the Montgomery Economic Development Commission by your executive director, or who's your point person on this, your paid staff member?
The town provo.
Yeah, John Provo.
From the Office of Economic Development.
And so, he gave a nice presentation. As one council member, your personal street cred with me is very high, so I'm interested in why you're here speaking on this instead of John Provo.
Well, because I'm a volunteer, and I've got a great stake in this, okay?
No, that's-
I'm on the regional council. I believe in this program.
That means a lot to me.
I believe in this program, and I believe over time, it will realize the objectives that we've laid out here. We've got to find a new way to stimulate economic growth that is beyond the lowest level of salary and compensation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for your time, sir.
I have some resolutions that we voted for on the consensus agenda. I would like to take a minute to, a few minutes to present these. First off, one is a resolution. Let's see, I'm going to ask you if you're joined me up here. The resolution in recognition of the Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Art Center. Whereas Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Art Center is a center for culturally significant art and artifacts, and whereas Montgomery County Museum and Lewis Miller Art Center works year round to bring art, music, and other cultural events to Christiansburg, and whereas the Montgomery County Museum and Lewis Miller Art Center maintains garden on its property, providing green space for public enjoyment, and whereas the Montgomery Museum, Lewis Miller Art Center encourages art appreciation through community partnerships and pop-up galleries, and whereas these pursuits enhance civic pride, provide entertainment, and improve the public's understanding of the local culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Christiansburg meeting in regular session November 13th, 2018 formally recognizes and commends the Montgomery Museum, Lewis Miller Art Center for the promotion of culture within the Town Christiansburg.
Thank you.
But anything else?
I'll have to-
Okay.
I'll do.
That's fine. That looks good.
All right. Hold on there. All right. Thank you. I'm not making a speech, but I do have big news. I really appreciate this, and that you all were thinking of us, and we are working hard for this community, and we'll continue to do so. We have a lot to live up to. But I have really good news. This name is not going to be this long ever again, and you would never have to say all those words. And I wish we'd known it earlier. We are abbreviating our title a little bit, so we have a new brand. It's Montgomery Museum of Art and History. It's not easy to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I would just like to say a word about Sue Farrar. Without her determination and zeal, enthusiasm, whichever adjectives you want to use, Sue has displayed that over these years. And really, I can basically say this, without Sue, the museum is not half what it is today. And I just wanted to put that out.
Does that constitute a mention?
Yeah.
Very good. All right. At this point, I am going to ask Doctors Becky and Scott Mann. Will they come forward? Resolution in recognition of Smiling Fish and Eyeglass Sculpture Installations. Whereas public art creates a sense of community enhancement and enhances civic pride and welcomes visitors to our town, and whereas public art beautifies our public spaces and encourages creativity, and whereas public art is a key component of efforts to revitalize Christiansburg, and whereas Becky Mann, Scott Mann, Jay Nabel, and Bob Hawke jointly funded the installation of the Smiling Fish sculpture in downtown Christiansburg, and whereas Becky Mann and Scott Mann previously funded the installation of the Eyeglass Sculpture in downtown Christiansburg, and whereas both projects have improved downtown Christiansburg and inspired the community to support and encourage public art. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Christiansburg Town Council meeting in regular session November 13th, 2018 formally recognizes and commends Becky Mann, Scott Mann, Jay Nabel, and Bob Hawke for their everlasting contribution to the Town Christiansburg.
Wow.
Do you know who's running? Do you want to be in Christiansburg?
We are. Thank you, council. Appreciate it. And we're just glad to hear the good things going with that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
It is. Next on the agenda, we have Andrew Warren and Will Drake, Public Relations. I'm sorry, planning department. My bad. Move the guy in, he's got the property he goes to.
Mayor and Town Council, good evening. My name is Will Drake, formerly serving as the Planner Two. I am pleased to present on the Planning Department tonight in my new role as Planning Director, for which I have served now for approximately 12 hours. I would find one joke on the last day. I will briefly overview the department activities from the previous fiscal year, and Andrew's going to provide some concluding remarks. So, core values. Core values of the Planning Department include responsiveness, consistency with processes, as well as a high level of coordination with other departments. Working with residents, developers, and business owners through the areas of land use and development is a critical part of ensuring they have a positive experience with the town. Clear communication is key, and the department prides itself on providing straightforward explanations in a courteous and timely manner. Consistency throughout all processes is also a key value. Land use situations are not always simple, and we strive to apply the code and interpretations when needed in consistent and common sense ways. We strive to balance the interests of property rights and predictability of development, and respect the importance when someone applies for a building permit or wants to build a deck or wants to open a new business. As communicating with the public is critical, so is internal communication. I believe the town does swell overall, and with development, a higher level of communication leads to better and more consistent information to our citizens, business owners, and the development community. So, we have experienced a little bit of staff change recently, so our roster is a little bit, I shouldn't say bare, but we are missing currently one. At full staff, the Planning Department has three full-time positions. It includes the Planning Director, Planner One, and Planner Two. Jared Cruz, who is our Planner One, joined the department in June of 2017. I myself joined the department in September of 2015. We also offer a part-time internship program that provides very practical experience and exposure to land use planning and code enforcement. We are proud of the fact that several of our recent interns have obtained full-time planning jobs after ending their internship with us. And finally, I would like to stress that we work very closely with the Engineering Department, the Building Department. We also work very closely with the Police Department in matters of code enforcement, and the support and the teamwork that they provide is critical to many of our efforts. So, I'd like to touch on the major areas of our work responsibilities, and then go into further detail on some of these on the next few slides. In terms of plan review, we review building permits, site plans, signed permits, and subdivisions for compliance with zoning ordinance. Our department is the lead staff, support to the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Midway Walkway Committee, as well as the Central Business District Committee. In terms of code enforcement, along with enforcing the zoning ordinance, we also enforce sections of the nuisance code, particularly that it relates to tall grass and junk and debris violations. And then, of course, there's long-range planning. Along with the comprehensive plan, there are several other long-range planning documents, efforts that our department has contributed to, including the adoption of urban development areas included comprehensive plan, and the upcoming work on the Appalachian Regional Commission Plan Grant that will focus on downtown, midtown, and Cambria. In terms of current development, in the previous fiscal year, our department reviewed 33 site plans. Site plans would be commercial development, industrial development, or larger-scale residential development. We reviewed nine subdivision flats for the division or reconfiguration of property lines, as well as reviewed 352 individual building permits. These would include applications for new homes, additions to existing homes, decks, and storage sheds. As part of the building permit process, we've performed 167 setback inspections in the field. We go out into the field before a building is built to verify the placement of the structure will meet the zoning ordinance, and is in the correct place. As part of this, we also performed 166 final inspections at the end of the job, when the home has been built or the job has been built. That's when we go out to verify that the parking, the site trees, the green space is all installed according to the plan. As I mentioned earlier, our department is the lead staff support to several boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Last fiscal year, between the Planning Commission and the DCA, we supported, our department supported 27 public hearings, including 15 conditional use permits, five code amendments, four rezonings, and three DCA cases. Code enforcement is another major area of responsibility for our department. In the previous fiscal year, we responded to 152 complaints, including 63 complaints for tall grass, 56 complaints for junk and debris, 11 zoning violations, 16 complaints of garbage carts being left out of the street too late or too early, five complaints for illegal signs, and one complaint for illegal dumping. In total, we performed 149 initial inspections and 167 re-inspections as part of our code enforcement program. Making through my first presentation here, I want to hand it over to Andrew Warren, who obviously was the Planning Director, and he's going to wrap things up.
Thanks, Will. We're thrilled to have Will on board. He's been quite a contributor to our department ever since he joined us in 2016. He- He, as I talk about some of the other things, one thing that Will did when we first got here was develop the ordinance for Urban Anthropural Program or Backyard Chickens. And that was one thing that was another responsibility of the Planning Department. But we also manage a very small, but very popular urban archery program, which we, we allocate four permits per year at the old Dump Luckerage Center, and they are much sought after. Those fill up, we get at least, at least four applications within the first hour of when, the first business day of July, so whenever that happens to be, the doors open up and the applications come streaming in. If we have as much popularity with the program this year as we did last year, we would probably have to go to a lottery system. We also manage the Community Development Block Man Program. Most recently, this program was a contributing funding source for the sidewalks on the Park Street which was completed, which now provides a much-needed pedestrian connection within the Park District neighborhood. We are also, we have been historically coordinating the special events grant programs. Casey Jenkins now is the event coordinator, has taken over that role, and we do provide support for special events, but Casey has been a huge addition to the town's team as far as really taking that process over in the industry. We're also involved with many regional planning efforts, such as with the Regional Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Technical Advisory Committee, as well as with the Roaming R and B organizing group. We also perform staff code amendments, and this does take quite a bit of time when we do get into code amendments. This past year, we worked on the noise ordinance, the year before, we worked on the sign ordinance, we also worked on the boarding houses as well as councils, and we currently are working with the Home State Code Amendments that will be moving on to industrial district control lots shortly after that. Long-range planning is important for the Planning Department, for the town overall. The town, the Planning Department is responsible for the comprehensive plan, which is intended to be updated every five years. We are looking to do a more significant update to the comprehensive plan next year. We do have one amendment that has made it to the Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, and we will be bringing that to council soon, and that has to do with adding the history section back to the, to the comprehensive plan, as well as putting in a section that has to do with broad, broad being planning in the town, which is going to be critical for economic development and for the quality of life for our residents as we move forward. We also are working with the, we've worked with the Urban Development Areas Grant in the past and produce special report for that, as well as in the fall, we're going to be evolving council at the Asl Archimedes and Commission Planning Grant, doing stakeholder meetings in downtown Cambria, and also our midtown area around the passenger rail station, so we're excited about that. The Regional Commission is really our consultant, so we'll be leaning on them to provide our staff support and working with them hand-in-hand throughout that process, so we're really looking forward to working with the Regional Commission staff members who are great to help. And this really ties into destination twenty-twenty-two, and hopefully everything that the Planning Department does ties into strategic planning for the town, which works to create an active destination for cultural recreation and entertainment, a destination for retail, commerce, and service. We want to be clean, green, healthy, and safe. We want to be a well-formed and active, engaged town with active, engaged citizens. We want to partner with our businesses and residents and be a sound financial institution to lead in Dossely, your own hometown. So that concludes my remarks. If you would, if you have any questions.
I would just like to say, we're over Planning Commission pretty quickly. If some of you people have not sat in on one of their meetings, usually meet on Mondays, they are doing outstanding job, and we have really had to lean on them this past year on the noise ordinance and the boarding house, and they do a lot of legwork and make things a lot easier for us, and they just have a lot of outstanding personnel working there. And Harry, I think, you know, I'd like to just, you know, thank you for, you know, how you, Harry is the liaison officer for us, and he relates.
You're a good man, I'll say you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Andrew, thank you very much. Next portion of citizens' comments, if you would like to address Town Council on any issue, please go to the podium, give your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes. Anyone here to address Town Council?
Good evening, my name is Ellie Travis from twelve fifteen Plum Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Downtown Christiansburg, Inc., in reference to an agenda item that will be discussed later, which is the facade program. DCI fully supports the proposed facade program, as we believe that it will support property owners of small businesses who want to invest in our community. Public-private partnerships like that, supported by the proposed grant program, show a commitment from the town of Christiansburg to supporting efforts to improve the character and appearance of downtown commercial buildings and those buildings in Cambria. Several downtown buildings and even more in downtown Cambria are architectural assets for our community and should be preserved. The funding made available through this program will assist historic property owners in performing the needed maintenance and improvement to their historic structures. Researchers, research has shown that municipalities who invest in historic communities see an uptick in property values and serve as a catalyst for private investment in businesses. Much of DCI's work focuses on changing the feel of downtown. Restored, restored building facades will go a long way in increasing that feeling of vibrancy and serve as a backdrop for a variety of programming and events sponsored by DCI, the town, and other organizations, in addition to a catalyst for future economic development in downtown and Cambria. DCI's board and our design committee will work with the town to promote this program and assist with gathering interested stakeholders for conversations. DCI is also prepared to assist the town in any way to execute the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Travis, can I get you a question, please?
Yeah.
What is your, and I'm a big fan of DCI, and this is not a rhetorical question or meant to do anything other than to find out more about you. What's your relationship with DCI?
I'm the Vice President of the Board.
Okay. And how long you been associated with DCI?
I joined in May of last year.
May of last year.
And I've been, I was elected President, I think, this May, so I'm, I'm sorry, Vice President, so I've been Vice President for the last six months.
Okay, well, certainly, or I, as one council member, I certainly appreciate what y'all are doing to create a lot of downtown, and as far as this program goes, we are going to be making some more grants available for downtown art, both as the council and maybe through some other mechanisms that we'll learn more about, but the Town Council, I think, is committed to seeing more of what the demands have left, but doing more of this and actually participating in that. So thank you.
And can I add one thing to? We need a favor from you folks, if you don't mind. We would like to have twice as many food events.
You know, we've already started planning for next year's food truck radio. It takes, it takes a lot of us, especially on volunteer boards.
Sure, okay. And you might want to consider different locations, you know, one, you know, one time down here on Main Street, next time down here. Here's a train station down there, you know, that'd be a good place to have it too, you know, just for a change up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll consider, we consider different locations in downtown Christiansburg.
How many you gonna have next year?
Sorry?
How many will you have next year?
Right now, we're planning on one.
One, okay.
Yeah. We have our wine artists in May, we'll bring people hopefully to College Street, so we're really excited about the expansion of that.
All right.
You have twenty trucks this year, is that right? Food trucks?
Yes, twenty trucks. I'm pushing for thirty next year. We have lots of people downtown, lots of hungry people, so we'd like to make sure we improve the event.
Thank you.
Ellie, just tell Justin, he's still the president, right?
Yes.
Okay. Tell him, I'm still waiting on my T-shirt I paid for at the farmers market, so.
I will make sure you get that.
Yeah, make sure. But are you guys still pursuing the nonprofit to where you can apply for grants through the town to help support those events that you put on?
We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we receive the special events grants through the town to support town services for our events.
Only for a year?
No, I think it's been probably a year or so since we got the status.
Okay. Because there's, there's more to just the event, the events grants are basically where we fund ourselves through you for the services we provide. This is more or less for those events that you plan on putting on, like cultural events. If you plan to put some on, you can apply for grants through the town, through our annual budget for that. And Justin knows about that, but I wasn't on the impression that you, I knew, I knew the group was working towards that, I wasn't on the impression that you actually got it, so, thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly discuss that. I think we talked about different ways that we can work with the town together to promote downtown Christiansburg, so we'll bring up that grant program again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rachel, twenty-five Cop Lane, Christiansburg. I'm not really sure if everyone here knows who I am, but I'm the girl the former town manager, Steve Biggs, was stalking and harassing. Not really sure how everyone failed to see what he was doing with everything that I tried to show and prove. In fact, I feel, I feel like people pretty much helped him to continue for the rest of me. I tried, I've tried, you know, a lot of things. I feel like everything, but I try and move past this and go on with my life, but it's hard. I think about all of it every day. I'm so angry and upset about everything that happened. I never thought that I could feel this, which hate towards a person, let alone multiple people for decisions that were made. I have to live with this for the rest of my life. All the words and the things that he said and did, the stress and the trauma from it, because of decisions made by people who should have cared, you know, considering the positions they were in. People whose job it was to protect people. I don't really know all the details or the whys, but I want to know if I was a good idea to seal police reports, especially during an open investigation. I want to know why, you know, that that decision was made. I want to know, and I want to know what changes are going to be made to make sure that this never happens to anybody ever again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've already given you the paperwork on what the stalking laws are. I've already read all the police reports, and I will tell you this, she is getting to live with the consequences of your decisions. Stalking law says, if a person contacts or follows or attempts to contact or follow a person whom the conduct is directed at or given actual notice, the person does not want to be contacted or followed, such, such actions shall be considered prima facie evidence the person intended to place in other person originally should have known that other person was placed in reasonable fear of defense or of death, criminal sexual assault, or bodily injury to himself or a family member or household member. She went to the magistrate on the eighth, and she went to court on the thirteenth, and yet despite that, on the fifteenth, when he went over to the building where she was living, nobody bothered to charge him, and when he went to her workplace on the twenty-eighth, after she had already gone to court and done what she needed to do to feel safe, nobody even bothered to forward that to the Commonwealth attorney. It was informational only. Oh, I spoke to Tommy Morris over at Virginia State Police, but we didn't forward it, even though there was an open investigation until the sixth. I said she gets to live with this. The decisions you make here are not in a vacuum, there are people, real people that are affected and impacted by choices that you make. Please consider that when you make your choices.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close citizens' comments, committee reports, finance? Yes, actually, we do have one finance committee report. Get my agenda from this evening. Councilor Michelle Walker, feel free to speak up. We try to keep it very brief and executive in nature. Are we taking, are we taking, are we taking action this evening on the budget amendment?
We will later. I, I think what maybe we're looking for is just a summation of what, that we met tonight, or you all met tonight.
Yes, yeah. What's that? Henry?
We're not taking any action on the budget amendment. I mean, that's still.
Oh, we're not taking any action on that? Okay.
Nobody, nobody has it.
Okay, then, the only thing, the only thing I want to bring the council's attention from the finance committee action is we went through a thorough dissection of the budget amendment, and two things, there is going to be a, as you know, there's a conversation study underway, and we, the finance committee recommends that we pull that out of the budget amendment and deal with that separately, and we get the recommendations back and so forth. And then the second item is, the playground equipment that Mr. Everly so capably got a grant for is, there is a fuse on that, and it basically would require us, before the end of this month, to put out four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get this playground equipment, and since we've not taken any action on the park property, then the finance committee's recommendation is to, unfortunately, we don't, we do not recommend that council do anything to any kind of outlay for playground equipment that we have no place for right now, and no guaranteed facility to put it in. And without, I mean, there's more to it, but those are the two executive items from the budget amendment that we were recommending council. Set aside, the conversation study is a separate issue for council, because we don't even know what those numbers are yet, or even what we want to do with that study. And then the second item is, the playground equipment, just to let council know, unless everyone, unless the other four council members feel separate differently, we're recommending that the, we do not buy that playground equipment right now, because it's, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of pocket, and it would sit in storage until we have a place to put it, and we don't even know that we're going to have that right now.
Wasn't the, the agreement was, they're paying half?
Well, it's complicated. Bottom line is, in order for us to take advantage of the grant that we got, we would have to put four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out right now before the end of the month to take advantage of that grant.
If we decided to do it, could we put this in the store?
You'd have to decide to do the park. Here's, here's the thing, we spent a half million dollars in the development of a park that we're no closer to build, and in our opinion, as finance committee, our recommendation is not spend any more money until council makes the decision to proceed with the park. That would be, that would be putting a million dollars into something that next week, in two weeks, we decide we're not going to do, and then we're stuck with all this equipment. It's, it's an action by council, that's, that's why we're at this stage.
This is the all-access, this is the all-access playground equipment, and there's no place to put it right now. But anyway, not to get into lengthy diatribe, but those are two highlights from two pages of amendments and everything else we felt comfortable with when we'll see all this. But there's, those are two items we felt that are worth mentioning.
But we're just mentioning that right now. We're not making a decision.
Correct, correct.
That's all we're doing is talking about.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
I think that's.
We're mentioning, but it's not gonna be in your budget amendment, the playground equipment, Steve. So it's not as if this is a gray area. When we go to vote on this, this will not be included.
Those are two things that we're recommending are not in there. So if you feel differently about either item, speak now, or you'll have a chance to also do that when we have, take a vote action.
Yeah, cause I would speak about, please just speak about that.
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Central business?
Yes, Mr. Bishop and myself and the committee have been working on the facade grant program. And I believe that Andrew Warren has done an interview that should come out this week, talking a lot about it. There's a few art installments already complete. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at them downtown in Cambria. We have a few more projects in store. We've also completed a welcome letter for new businesses that the mayor and our town manager signs. It welcomes businesses and lets them know how to get involved and who to reach out for information. And this Thursday is the police department mural unveiling. What time is that again, noon?
Twelve, isn't it?
Twelve, okay. Love to encourage people to attend that. It's the first of some exciting projects that we are hoping to put here in the next timeframe, sorry. And that's all that I have for central business at the top, this time. The next meeting is towards the end of the month after the next council meeting. So I encourage anybody interested to attend. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing for finance committee?
Sure.
Is we, there was a gift from Mr. and Ms. Thompson and Ms. Nixon for cultural and, and art. And we have recommended as a finance committee to create a reserve fund.
Special revenue.
Special revenue fund. I knew I'd get it eventually. To where we would put that money to be used for arts and, and hopefully get more donations. And of course, we'll recognize Mr. and Ms. Thompson and Ms. Nixon, even though they didn't wanna be recognized for it in the future. But I think it's important that we, we create a fund like that, one to help Casey and anybody who wants to do art downtown or throughout town. I think it's, it's important. So hopefully council will support that when it comes to you as well here in the next few weeks. Honestly, recommendation from finance committee is good enough. Are you bringing it to council?
Yes.
Okay, good. So hopefully you'll think about that and support that.
Mr. Collins? On committees?
Our committees, no, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry, buddy. I'd just like to say, as a member of the, the rec committee, I am tickled to death to have Mr. Hall to be in the committee with me. He's a fine man, and I've learned a lot from him.
How much, how much did you pay him?
That's twenty bucks.
Next on the agenda is discussion and action by mayor and council. Firstly, the appointment of Art Ford Hall to fill the vacant term of Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission with the term ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion?
Uh, just, your meetings have now been extended another half an hour. Now, kidding, the court's done law.
That's okay.
I, I was pleased to see Mr. Hall.
Yeah, I was happy to see you want to come back.
He knew his interest in, in, in the town again.
Are there any other committees you'd like to be on?
I'd be fully satisfied by this.
Very good.
It's a good start.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilman Ms. Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Bishop Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
And thanks, Ford.
So, the board, Ford, or back of board, whatever. Reappointment of Richard Colwell, Chris Foal, Bob Paul, to the building code appeals for four-year terms ending December thirty-one, twenty-two, and reappointment of Larry S. Martin and Earl Schrader as alternates to the board of building code of appeals with terms ending December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Chris and Bob work here.
Yeah, well, I think we explained to ask that we go ahead and appoint him since he's gonna be out there.
Bob, but I think Chris is coming back, isn't he? Chris is going to actually attend.
Congratulations.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? One clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
Very good, that is six oh, thank you. Next up is opposed downtown Cambria facade and grant program. Is that you, Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir. Thank you, I'm glad to kind of fill in between the lines of what we've been thinking for a while. There is Christiansburg facade program. This will be for downtown Cambria. It's been a long time, and making, and appreciating central business district committees' work on this over the last few months. As you know, and happen to remember that twenty-five thousand dollars was set aside as a pilot project for this fiscal year. And that's what we'll be utilizing moving forward with the facade grant, with the program. So what are the goals? Really three forms. Really to improve the visual streetscape of the primary streets in downtown Cambria. Really to stabilize those, those front facades on the buildings. Also, the second item is really to create partnerships, strengthen partnerships with our downtown Cambria stakeholders. This really provides an opportunity to talk to business owners and to see what their plans are for, you know, for their buildings. And, and what it does moreover is, you know, encourage investment in, in older buildings, in our historic buildings. What is, you'll hear me say, you might have heard me say before, this, this program is modeled after a program in Salem. And, and they have found that, that the money that is spent is far greater than the match that, that they put out for a, for the facade grant. So dollar for dollar, they're actually seeing more investment in the building, not only in the front facade, but in HVAC equipment and upgrades to kitchen equipment and, and different investments for their business and for their property. So what are some knowledgeable activities? Well, you know, it really does need to be in line with our conference of plan, other planning documents like the urban development areas report. The, the owner or agent needs to be making some other substantial investment, or that, that is, that is encouraged. The, the building does need to be lawfully occupied or have an improved building for, for changes or repairs leading to a significant occupancy for being used. So this really isn't for vacant buildings. It, it is to, to encourage investment in buildings that are being used now. Somebody's in the process of rehabilitating the building, that is certainly something that we can work with them on to submit an application. And it would be a dollar for dollar match up to forty-five hundred dollars. And we would have five applicants that we'd be working with this year.
How many applicants do you have right now?
So we're gonna be opening that up in, in January. So we, we wanna have good details out to, to all tonight. So we think of them, and then if we get green light, we'll move forward with our public, with our public involvement advertising.
Thanks.
So as far as what we wanna do, as I mentioned before, we're looking to stabilize the facade of buildings that really make, that make the streets, that placemake our, our downtown in Cambria, that create a sense of, of location, of uniqueness, that, that our buildings together really offer that you don't get a lot of times in newer developments. We want to encourage property owners to look at inconsistent materials of the facades, such as wooden board, plywood, vinyl siding, and replacement windows. Can they restore those original details underneath? In example, there's, there are transom windows. Can they restore original windows? Can we look to repair, restore, and replace period correct architectural details, such as door mirrors, lintels, window pegments, colors? Painting and historic period colors. Restoration of historic paintings on which we don't have too many around, but there are. One more example is the barn surface building where the antique store is and, and Magenberg Cafe. That, that, that could be potentially knowledgeable project. Murals on building facades from the public street. And then finally, hardscaping, landscaping improvements in the area between the front of the building and the public streets. Those are critical spaces that, that help placemake the, the area of town. So where are we looking? The, we're really looking at those facades that front on, on North Franklin and a little bit of South Franklin. And then, and also Main Street. Basically from the, the courthouse in the Wildeh Market Street, the, the buildings that, where the murals being painted now with the, that is the fundraiser for the king with, with dogs and cats. So, so that building would be included, then we wrap around and come down Main Street and, and go basically towards St. Paul, not to this church. And then in Cambria, it would basically be Cambria and then portions of deep street as well. It's not all as large in areas simply because geography is not as larger of, 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 of downtown. So moving forward, we look to have a three-week enrollment period. That would be for those, and then we would look to select awardees. We're looking to make this similar to Salem's program in that looking to make it not cost prohibitive. So Salem has really shut down a lot of architectural costs by, by working with a local artist that understands architecture, and she understands design. And, and she is willing to work with property owners and spend time with them and talk to them about how they look like, how they see the vision for their property. So we're really excited that Robin Petit, a Salem artist, she has a little shop in downtown Salem, is, is going to be willing to work with us. And we will, we will work with her to, to meet with businesses, the property owners, to develop a drawing after discussing the building with town staff and, and the committee. And then she will draw these designs for review and approval of the, of the committee that are looking to sign.
Does she do that for hire, or?
So she, we do.
How would she get paid?
So, so the town would pay her out of the, out of the twenty-five thousand dollar allocation.
Okay.
So, so we would look to pay about three to five hundred dollars for her services, for, for drawings. But as we looked at other programs, architectural renderings and drawings, it's really run two to three thousand dollars.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know. So that's really not cost prohibitive. So the message for people that are watching is town is encouraging this and is, is, is not cost prohibitive to, to bring something to us. And I think that's great. Okay, thanks.
So this is Charlotte's Web, which is in downtown Salem. And they have actually, it's the same company that has contracted to purchase the Euphorion in Cambria. So they're actually gonna be bringing their, their business to, to Christiansburg. And this is what it looks like today. So central business committee is, is recommending a review board of three to five members that would need to select the awardees and then also to review and approve the drawings. They see this group, you know, three to five board members. One could be someone with some background in architecture, art, indoor history. Another would be a business owner, maybe a property owner. Another could be a citizen at large. Council representative on the central business committee, or another designated council member. And, and one of these people could fill one or more qualifications as well. The town manager and I would act as the staff support to the committee at this time.
Are, are you maybe considering Bob Paul as maybe a possible person on this?
I believe his name was, was mentioned, yes. And as we, as we move forward, we, we have a number of things to, to accomplish between now and our, the next central business committee meeting. And that is one of those items to bring a list of, of interested candidates for, for the committee to the central business committee. And then to have that, to finalize a slate of, of members that, that we think, with any suggestions that you all have, I'm sure. Ms. Sacks or Ms. Bishop. So as far as what happens once they're selected, the applicant in, in the drawing is, is approved. The applicant provides an itemized budget for the drawing within one month of approval. So basically, they're taking the drawing and they're saying, okay, I wanna do all of these things. And then they're pricing them out. So they're not gonna do them all at once, but they will need to do them within a certain period of time of, of the year. So it would be six months, or we could approve a phase in the schedule over nine months if, if they know they're gonna be able to do, do two or three things, and gonna be able to do an audio portion. And then later they'll be able to do painting of the building or vice versa. And then they would invoice the town for half the expenses, up to forty-five hundred dollars. So that's, that would be the dollar for dollar amount. So we do have the artists on board. The central business committee had met and brings this forward to you this evening. The, we're hoping that you'll look to take action this evening on the program. We will be working with Melissa and her department on developing a webpage presence as well as any promotional materials for the program and bring those to our central business committee at the end of the month. We'll also have dates at that time to be set for, for three public meetings, two downtown and one in Cambria, as well as providing sending letters, emails to all businesses and property owners in selected areas. I mean, our enrollment period will look to be the middle of January through the first of February. All comments I have, you have any questions?
I make a motion, we accept the downtown in Cambria facade grant program as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing nothing, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilman Sacks?
An exciting yes.
Councilman Shawalter?
Yes.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
I believe that to be six oh. Last on our discussion is real, reallocation of funds of the capital projects for EMS revenue recovery funds, funds for the communications building to the rescue building renovations. Ready?
Essentially, it's simply received for the rescue renovations for a hundred and eight thousand over budget. And we're proposing to use the current capital budget for communications building. Both of those are budgeted to be revenue recovery money. We're basically proposing to use the communications building money to cover the cost overrun with the rescue building.
Is it the same architect that's done the aquatic center and the police department?
I'm not sure. It's not, I'm not, I'm not familiar.
Okay. Then I'll support it.
In form of a motion?
Yeah.
Zoe Jeanine? I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
Couple of public hearings just out. One would be for, uh, budget, uh, public hearing for the budget amendment. We hope to have that for December eleventh. And I was gonna ask, I guess, a recommendation from the finance committee. Do you see a need for a work session prior to that? Or are you fine just bringing that through the public hearing?
That's entirely up to council. All right. Whatever your level of trust is with your finance committee. It wouldn't be a benefit if you wanted to go through it. I, I would encourage that you send it out.
We, we could send it in.
And then if you have questions, you sit down with Randy and Val.
It is a pretty, I guess, minor budget amendment.
But this is for us. We wanna make recommendations, we can.
Yes, yes, you could.
Okay.
Yeah. But the, yeah.
The thing about the playground that we just discussed, I think, maybe that needs to be bought up. I would like to bring that up. Um, so we, we, maybe we need a, a short.
You have two weeks to do it then. And it would require a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment between now and the month.
I'll have you check my log.
Okay, so that is one on the eleventh for the budget amendment?
Yes.
All right, is there another one?
Another public hearing for, uh, alley or access easement vacation behind Cambria and Ford.
Okay, and that is the same time?
Yes, December eleventh.
Okay.
Could you repeat what that one was again, Randy?
It's for alley or access easement vacation behind Cambria and Ford.
All right, so we're saying we're gonna meet at five thirty or something like that? We're not gonna do it, uh?
If, if, if we want to have a work session, we can. I don't think it would take necessarily that long. You can do it before the next council meeting if you'd like. If you want to simply try to address it at the pub, at the public hearing, you can. Like I say, I think it's fairly, fairly minor changes, but if you'd want, we can send it to you ahead of time either way.
What about, would be a little aspect or something?
We have a couple of weeks.
Do you do it, sir? I'll pull. Anybody wants to meet for a work session real quick? Who wants to meet for a work session about the budget amendment? I'm pulling my hand down.
But this is where we make recommendations.
Uh, you can, yes. Or you can make recommendations when we get ready to act on it, Mr. Bishop.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and if there's one or two council members that wants an additional, even just a one-on-one FaceTime with Mr. Williamsfield or Ms. Tweedy, come down. I mean, that might even be more productive, uh, if you do it one-on-one, get your questions answered. Or, but, yeah, it's your, it's your pleasure.
Well, we have, we have one more council meeting before this, before this one anyway. We have one at the end of the month. If there's any, any decisions we made about work sessions or anything else, we'll do it at that meeting if that's all you.
That's, that's fine.
Very good.
Yeah, just bring up first the, uh, second meeting in December. We follow the December twenty fifth. I'm assuming you want to cancel that meeting?
You'll move it back to the twenty-fourth?
No. I assume we have canceled it already.
We have in the past, certainly, and, uh, so.
We do see a need for emergency meeting or something you can schedule a night.
I think that's all we've done.
Sure. So, uh, do I have a motion to cancel December with the twenty-fifth meeting?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Yeah.
That is six oh, thank you very much. Uh, anything else, Randy?
So, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, you got anything? Very good. Any other town staff? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, council reports. Hearing none, you wanna move on? It's a long meeting.
Well.
You got anything to cover for council?
I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I think everybody saw the swim meet that was held at the Aquatics Center this past weekend. They had about eight hundred kids swimming there. And then there's gonna be another big meet, I think, first weekend, uh, weekend in, in December. There'd be about a thousand kids swimming in that. So that's two big, uh, meets that, uh, uh, there, I think there are two-day special. There's two-day meet, so, uh, you know, we got a little bit out there in hotels and restaurants. Thank you.
Harry, is that the biggest, uh, youth meet of the year, December, is it December first? Yeah. So if you guys, if anybody gets an opportunity, I've been able to go to a few of them 'cause my kids swim, but it's incredible. I mean, a- and it's fun too, so stop by.
Anyone else? I, I would like to bring up one thing I had concerning the skateboard park that, uh, I, I found out recently, for some reason, I, I thought he had passed away. But George Schaefer, who was the driving force behind this thing, is, is living in South Carolina. And I know we don't name things after people per se, but I thought it would be nice, just a plaque in honor of George Schaefer and his wife for, uh, the foresight and, and the hard work to bring that skate park to fruition.
Absolutely.
And I will, I've got George's cell phone number and I'll get with Brad and, and Terry. Terry, I bet, that's under your bail to look at. But we'll figure something out, just a very brief ceremony. And if he can, if George can come up, certainly we'd like him, he's a part to attend. But, uh, then I, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll proceed with the nod from you all.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And so you gotta put a little plaque right there at the, uh, skateboard park?
I understand that. No, we're gonna put something up. I'll, I'll, we'll figure it out. It'll be tastefully done. Any other business to come for council?
I, I have one thing. I served the, uh, stuff I asked around for the meeting concerning the, uh, high school students coming to work, you know, with us or whatever, you know, for one day. This is the first time that this has been put out. It's not approved by the school and haven't even, it hadn't even been approached by the school, okay? It, it's just something I, I framed in the council, uh, worked up and would like us to look at and see what we think.
This questionnaire is part of it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That and the, and the, yeah, that part also, yeah.
I looked at the scope and there, there's a lot of students there, uh, about fifty, I think. If they, if they shadowed each.
Yeah.
Well, we, uh, and I think that possibly it may be.
I think it's way too many.
I think it's way too many. We may wanna, you know, cut back to the administrative staff and, uh, police chiefs and some of the.
Yeah, I agree completely, yeah.
So.
If you guys, and girl, if you think this is the way to go, I'm gonna go talk to the school and I'll work it up if that's what, you know, folks wanna do.
What, 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 what is this, uh, just a shadowing?
Yes, sir. Yeah, where students shadows us for a day, you know, the shadows, you know, they shadows for a day.
Council members?
You're on the like, you're sir, you got, yeah.
Well, I, I, yeah, I think anybody that normally conducts business here.
Like you, you're here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's certified.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to see it refined a little bit, Harry. Maybe I can talk about it.
Sure, okay, yeah.
Come back to council with the plan.
Yeah, okay.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
We're trying, thank you, Harry.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, so, thank you, Harry. Is there any more business to cover for council?
Not, like, I, I move that the town council entered into closed meeting as stipulated in our agenda, specifically in accordance with the Code of Virginia, subsection two point two, parentheses thirty-seven, eleven, A three for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real estate or real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The closed meeting pertains to discussions regarding a potential recreational property in Montgomery County, uh, as well as a potential public works property in Montgomery County, as well as a historical property in the Cambria District. Secondly, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, subsection two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A seven for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consult pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. This closed meeting pertains to a recent cybersecurity incident. That was a motion.
A second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
That is six oh. We're gonna reset for about five minutes and then we'll come back in. Now reconvene our, our, from our closed meeting. Mr. Thompson?
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting, to the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Motion. Motion?
No, we're not.
Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Sykes.
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter.